Good evening.
Okay.
This is a meeting of the Township Committee. The notice require, uh, September fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. The notice requirements provided for in the Open Public Meetings Act have been satisfied. Notice of this meeting was properly given by transmission to the Asbury Park Press and the Two River Times and by posting at the Middletown Township Municipal Building and filing with the Township Clerk on January eleventh, twenty twenty-five. Committeeman Clark.
Here.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Here.
Committeeman Sedambrino.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Here.
Mayor Perry.
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
At this time, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence to honor the troops serving worldwide, defending our constitutions, freedoms, and way of life. Thank you. Our first item on tonight's agenda, we have a presentation prepared by Stacy Kraus, our floodplain administrator, um, on flooding public, uh, annual flooding public information update.
Hello, Stacy.
Hi.
How are you today?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Well, we're sending this up. If I could just explain kind of what we do this, and if you remember, we did, did this last year. Middletown participates in, um, a program called Community Rating System, commonly just referred to as CRS. And it requires the municipality to be somewhat proactive in dealing with floodplain issues, educating the public. And what the Community Rating System does, and we, we benefit from it, is if you participate in that program and you achieve certain goals, you, you get for your residents a discount on their flood insurance rates. They don't necessarily know about it, but when they call and they say they're buy, they're, they're getting a policy in Middletown, it comes with a discount because we participate in this, in this program. If we didn't participate in the program, their, the rates would, would go up. So it's really important for the residents to, to, uh, take this seriously. So Stacy's been doing a great job since, since she's taken over as floodplain administrator. She's gone in the past few weeks to, to a couple of different real estate companies, done presentations for them, explaining how flood insurance works and how to determine flood area, uh, issues. And, um, and real estate agents are a hard group to convince to do things a little differently. Uh, so it, it's all part of that process and part of it is, is explaining to the public the issues and the importance of the program, so.
I think you have this.
Now that, now, now, now that Tony has done your entire presentation, Stacy.
Just touched.
No, I'm.
The surface.
Go ahead, go ahead, Stacy.
Okay. So again, I'm Stacy Kraus and the Township's Certified Floodplain Manager. This is part of our annual update to you guys and the public on our public program for public information, specifically on flood hazards and flood insurance. This is required by FEMA, not required by it for every town, but required for us because we do want to provide that discount to our residents. And also, if we didn't participate in the CRS program, it would be impossible for our residents to participate in certain mitigation grant programs, should that, like elevation money ever get replenished. So the, uh, the PPI again is the part of this community rating system. We participate and our residents, uh, in the special flood hazard area, commonly referred to as the SFHA, currently get a fifteen percent discount on their flood insurance and everybody outside of it gets a five percent. Um, includes flood risk reduction through, this is a partnership through myself, the building department, um, Ted and his group, our zoning officer, our planning department. So it's quite a few departments in town working together on this. Tara and, and Raven are also instrumental in getting a lot of this information out. So there are five hundred and forty-nine towns in New Jersey that participate and we're number twenty-two in the state in terms of number of flood insurance policies in force. So the center graphic is from the two thousand and seventeen Monmouth County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan. And then to the right, that text is the latest update. So we have a decrease in seven hundred and thirty policies in town and you would say, why is there less flood insurance policies in town? And there's a few reasons for that. Um, so the flood insurance map changes. So you, maybe you were required to have flood insurance prior to two thousand and seventeen and now you're not. Um, people pay off their mortgages. If there's no mortgage, then that requirement to have flood insurance goes away. And then also just because of costs. So people are leaving the NFIP and then seeking coverage from private lenders as, as a cost-saving method. Um, also, we have a decrease, decrease in a hundred and twenty-nine repetitive loss properties in town. So repetitive loss pretty much means just that. You're suffering losses repetitively that you are seeking insurance payouts for. So you're thinking, wow, a decrease of a hundred and twenty-nine, excellent. But the bad news is we've increased our severe repetitive loss properties. So what happened there? Since two thousand and seventeen, over four hundred and, four hundred thousand dollars has been paid out to properties that has pushed that needle. They went from repetitive loss to severe repetitive loss. So what is this telling us and me specifically as the floodplain manager? We still have a lot of work to do. We have areas that are still seeing repetitive, uh, flooding. Maybe current hazard mitigation projects are not, um, helping this, these specific areas. We started doing a lot more outreach for property-specific mitigation, ceiling cracks and foundations, stormwater management, things like that, that could be beneficial. So I'm going to pull out the mapping. I'm really going to hone in on where these now homes have shifted to severe repetitive loss to really see where we need to, for our next update, push out this information even more. So hopefully I can come back here next year and say, you know, we found these specific properties, here's the exact mitigation efforts that we offered them and here's how they're moving forward. Um, okay, next. So again, the PPI stands for Program for Public Information. Um, we have a, a great PIO in town. What I do is very specific to flood hazard and flood, flood insurance. So we create and disseminate information specifically in those areas and we have public sector partners that we create. And when I say we, the PPI group is, um, myself, Neptune, Oceanport, Bricktown, so floodplain managers and construction officials in these specific towns in this group. Um, we create this information, we give it to these professionals and they push it out on TV, on radio, um, through their, their clients in their flood insurance, um, their flood insurance policies. So we work and, and this, the state of New Jersey, our Certified Floodplain Manager Group, we all work with Risk Reduction Plus and they're ANFI certified, which just means that they have a special, um, another extra level of certification in terms of, um, of flood insurance. And then Charlie Errett is our public volunteer in town because we have to have one. So he comes to most of the meetings with me. And then Marco Fernandez has, has stepped in when, um, when Charlie's not available. And that's a requirement again for us to participate in this program. So why is this important? We have seventy-five hundred residents in town in the special flood hazard area and three thousand homes. And again, we have nearly two thousand flood insurance policies and sixty million dollars has been paid out to these policies since nineteen seventy-eight with the inception of the program. Our priority audiences, uh, for outreach are obviously current homeowners in the high-risk area, particularly those who have not yet elevated their homes. New home buyers, so I get calls every day, people from North Jersey, people from New York. I'm going to come buy this, you know, this small beach bungalow and I'm going to gut it and I'm going to just, you know, redo the house. And that's not possible in Middletown. There's elevation requirements, there's mitigation requirements. So I'm the one that kind of breaks that news every day. Um, we create specific outreach for seniors who may need help with shelter in place or evacuation. As Tony said, I've already done two education sessions with real estate agents in Monmouth County who specifically settle in Middletown. And I'm trying to help them communicate risk. So here's the sources to get the information. This is how you can disseminate it and this is why it works in your favor. Because you never want to be that real estate agent that someone calls me and says, well, they never told me and I didn't know. Why aren't they telling me this? So I let them know that. So we're working in partnership to help get this information out. Because again, what are front properties desirable? It's always going to be desirable. So you have to learn how to communicate that risk. And then I also create outreach for engineers and surveyors. And these are the professionals that are specifically hired by homeowners to do the mitigation work and complete a lot of this, um, mandatory FEMA paperwork for them. So what have I done in the last year? Um, in two thousand and twenty-four, Tara interviewed me for the Township YouTube channel. I've done presentations to the Port Monmouth Neighborhood Plan Group. We do an ocean fun day at Sandy Hook where we talk to residents about flood insurance. We have an annual flood insurance open house in Town Hall. Um, I have flyers for it right up at the front next to my, my business cards. It's going to take place Thursday, October second at six PM right upstairs. And again, that's Risk Reduction Plus. Who's going to come in and talk to everyone? They're the experts on how you're rated to a certain flood insurance, um, price. And then, you know, what that wiggle room is, why things are the way they are, certain mitigation projects that you can do to help yourself, things like that. Um, every June, I write a letter to the homes that are filing those repetitive loss claims with their flood insurance policy to coincide with hurricane season. Like, you know, here we are again, this is what you should be expecting. I have a booth at Middletown Day where I bring a tablet and people have me type in their address and we talk about where they sit in the flood zone or don't. Those people are generally happier. Um, Ted and I worked on a stormwater bolt in the spring where we, where we sent information out to homeowners to let them know how they can protect, protect their homes, specifically, you know, gutters, downspouts, regrading, things like that. Again, the ongoing adjustment, uh, education for the real estate companies. Middletown is now storm-ready and that's a designation that we enjoy because of work that the county has done. So we get quite a few CRS points for that. And then some ongoing stuff, um, Charlie and I are always cooking up new stuff with the different seasons for evacuation, utility, um, information, uh, again, prospective buyers and new residents, and then always working with the building department to let people know how they can go about using these guidelines to, um, you know, update their homes, but also install, you know, pools in the flood zone and fences if they have wetlands and things like that. So just to plug the floodplain management website, it has all the information on it. There's a tons of, tons of tabs on the left-hand side to explain all of this stuff. There's stuff specifically for real estate agents to look at, engineers to look at, homeowners, stuff about, um, you know, what DEP permits you're going to need and how I can help you with that. Insurance information, how to, how to sign up for insurance. And then we have a cost-share agreement with Monmouth County to use the Forerunner platform. So every elevation certificate for every elevated home that's ever made its way to the township, and there's about seven hundred of them, has been uploaded onto this website. So hopefully in the future, because, you know, we're still kind of advertising it. I think they told me we get about, I, I think we got a thousand hits in the last six months. So, you know, people are using it, but it's certainly an avenue to have the information right at your fingertips. So you're not having to do an open request for all this stuff, right? Because that can take time. Um, and today I got the USGS elevation, ground elevation uploaded onto the site. So you can click on your property and say, okay, the ground elevation on my property is only a foot. So if I need to go to twelve, that's going to be quite a lift, literally. But you can also see if it's maybe six, seven, or eight feet. So that elevation isn't going to be as extreme. So that information is now, um, up on the site. It's just in meters. So we have to make sure people realize that. Uh, we're going to get it transferred into, into feet in the next update. So I think that's all I have. So again, I have my business cards and the flood insurance open house flyers at the front if anybody would like. And that's it.
All right. Thank you, Stacy. Any questions from the committee?
Stacy, I just want to confirm, uh, you said there's three thousand flood policies in town now?
There is. I think that might be, uh, properties. There used to be just over two thousand, now there's one thousand nine hundred and eighteen. So there's less policies in force in town.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions from the committee? Okay. Thank you, Stacy. Okay.
Uh, for the record, a proclamation recognizing September twenty twenty-five as Pediatric Cancer Awareness Month in the Township of Middletown. A proclamation recognizing September twenty twenty-five as ovarian cancer awareness month in the Township of Middletown. And a proclamation recognizing September twenty-fifth as prostate cancer awareness month in the Township of Middletown. We also have a proclamation recognizing September twenty twenty-five as recovery month in the Township of Middletown. A proclamation recognizing September twenty twenty-five as National Preparedness Month in the Township of Middletown. And a proclamation recognizing, uh, September twentieth, twenty twenty-five as Usher Syndrome Awareness Day in the Township, Township of Middletown. And a proclamation recognizing September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five as Gold Star Mothers and Families Day in the Township of Middletown. At this time, we have the approval of minutes for August eleventh, twenty twenty-five.
Motion to approve.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeeman, Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sedambrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to approve minutes. At this time, we have public hearing on proposed ordinances. Our first ordinance, twenty twenty-five dash three, four, seven, seven, an ordinance establishing, uh, establishment, authorizing establishment of government energy aggregation program within the Township of Middletown.
Any member of the public wishing to speak on public ordinance number two thousand twenty-five dash three, four, seven, seven. Energy aggregation. Nope. Seeing no member of the public stepping forward, move to close the public portion and approve.
Second.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sedambrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries adopt this ordinance on second and final reading. At this time, we have ordinance twenty twenty-five dash three, four, seven, eight, an ordinance amending chapter two forty dash twenty-three of the Township Codes, establishing special service charge for body worn camera footage requests.
Any member of the public wishing to speak on public ordinance number two thousand twenty-five dash three, four, seven, eight. Seeing no member of the public stepping forward, move to close the public portion and approve.
Second.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sedambrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on second and final reading. At this time, we have, uh, public hearing for twenty twenty-five dash three, four, seven, nine, an ordinance amending chapter five forty dash five nineteen of the Township Code, governing the outdoor display of goods.
Any member of the public wishing to speak on public ordinance number two thousand twenty-five dash three, four, seven, nine. Seeing no member of the public stepping forward, move to close the public portion and approve.
Second.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sedambrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on second and final reading. Our next item on tonight's agenda, we have introduction of proposed ordinances. Our first ordinance, twenty twenty-five dash three, four, eight, zero. Ordinance authorizing entry into purchase and sale agreement with the County of Monmouth and Port Monmouth Residential Developer LLC for redevelopment of portions of block three zero six, lot sixty, sixty-six in the Township of Middletown.
Motion to introduce.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sedambrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on first reading with a public hearing to be held October sixth, twenty twenty-five. Our next item for, uh, introduction, twenty twenty-five dash three, four, eight, one. An ordinance amending and restating ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash three, three, nine, nine solely as to the established fair market value for property identified as block eight thirty-five, part of lot eighteen within the Township of Middletown.
Motion to introduce.
Second.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sedambrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on first reading with a public hearing to be held October sixth, twenty twenty-five. We have, uh, twenty twenty-five dash three, four, eight, two, an ordinance authorizing lease agreement with Fostering Farmers, Inc., a not-for-profit organization for use of approximately one acre of land for farming purposes located upon block ten, twelve, lot thirty-one point zero one within Stevenson Park, as shown on the tax map of the Township of Middletown, not currently required for public purposes pursuant to NJSA forty-eight, colon, twelve dash fourteen, C.
Motion to introduce.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sedambrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on first reading with a public hearing to be held on October sixth, twenty twenty-five. And we have twenty twenty-five dash three, four, eight, three, an ordinance of the Township of, Committee of the Township of Middletown, County of Monmouth, State of New Jersey, authorizing, authorizing the sale of block ten ninety-eight point zero two, lot nineteen point zero one pursuant to NJSA forty-eight, colon, twelve, dash, one, edsec.
Motion to introduce.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sedambrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on first reading with a public hearing to be held October sixth, twenty twenty-five. At this time, I'd like to ask the Township Committee to adopt a consent agenda, which would include resolutions twenty-five dash two, six, nine through twenty-five dash two, eight, nine, and removing twenty-five dash two, ninety for a separate vote.
Motion to approve a consent agenda.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sedambrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt consent agenda. At this time, we have resolution twenty-five dash two, ninety, a resolution for payment of bills list as of September fifteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Motion to approve.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman, Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sedambrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Recuse.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass resolution twenty-five dash two, ninety. This time, we have Township Committee comments.
All right. Committeeman Clark?
No comments.
Committeeman Sedambrino?
Uh, no comments this evening, mayor. Thank you.
Committeewoman Kratz?
I'm going to hold mine, mayor. Thank you.
EM.
We'll do the same, but I do have a lot to tell everyone about Mr. Perry's dance moves.
Then I'm going to talk about you climbing a hundred and ten floors.
He did it.
All right. Uh, with that being said, I'll open it up for public comment. Any member of the public wishing to make a public comment may do so, as that you state your name, uh, when you come up to the microphone and that you keep your comments to five minutes or four minutes, I'll let you know that you have one minute remaining. Any member of the public wishing to make a public comment?
For now, or should I do that on October sixth?
Uh, that, that will have its own public hearing on October sixth. Okay? Any other member of the pub? Yes, ma'am. I'm off kiltered here. How are you today?
I'm, I'm doing well, thank you. Um, my name is Andrea Abbott. Um, I didn't know if I would come here today, but I'm actually glad to be here. I'm not prepared to talk, um, but I'll do the best I can to introduce the reason I'm here. Um, I live now currently at forty-one Hurley's Lane and, um, I moved in there in August first. So this is.
Well, welcome.
A great time to decide to come and talk about something that's very near and dear to my heart. Um, I actually grew up in Middletown in the fifties and the sixties, uh, adjacent to Bodman Park. Um, so I'm very familiar with all of Middletown. I've lived around here, I know all the areas, et cetera. Uh, one of the places I really was looking forward to living was back towards more rural areas where there's not so much traffic congestion, where there's, you know, uh, farmland, et cetera. So when I landed in Lynn Croft, I'm, I'm thrilled. Uh, my dad used to drive us on Sundays all around these back roads, Oak Hill, everything, Red Bay. On Sundays, we'd take family drive with six kids and my two parents. And, uh, so all of this rural, um, area really means a lot to me. I have been going for decades, several decades now, I have been visiting Stevenson Park. And I grew up playing like a wild Indian in Bodman Park. Uh, we didn't have playdates, uh, we didn't have supervised organized sports as the reasons for us to get it together. We played freely in the woods, in the woodland. Luckily, the, the Middletown Recreation Committee would throw different things down at the park, uh, movies and things like that. But other than that, we were free to roam and free to explore. I don't think the children have that benefit nowadays. Uh, when I ran into Stevenson Park, uh, I noticed that it was a place where wildlife, it was wildlife's habitat and wildlife went around its business. It wasn't a place that we had raised to the ground and left a couple of little cropping some trees on the side so that if you were lucky, you saw some wild animal, some kind of wild creature, turtle, frogs, et cetera. Um, I noticed the difference was is that they were going about their business and we were lucky to walk down the path and see them and experience the joy of being around other, um, forms, life forms, basically. So anyway, I've taken many pictures down there over the years, over the past decades of the different animals and stuff, and they're all wonderful and beautiful and trees. I have noticed that for decades now, over the years, um, the place is looking decidedly unloved. Uh, it's, it's a disgrace, actually. Um, it has been allowed to go crazy with, um, uh, just the, just the appearance. It hasn't been taken care of the way if something is beloved, it would be taken care of. Um, the results of that is that there's been tons of vandalism. Uh, today I stopped by just to confirm my attitude and, uh, and I saw the picnic table down on the little peninsula near the lake, uh, is, has, uh, one of the seats is torn off. Uh, there's red paint all over the picnic table, some kind of graffiti, and then there's a tree next to the water that has red paint up and down it. Uh, we all know that those signs that used to tell you all about the wonders of that park have been destroyed over the years. We know that the, the two, um, I forget what you, the two ramps have been thoroughly destroyed over the years, probably by adolescents testing their strength. Uh, maybe with, you know, witnesses, um, who would applaud their, their behaviors, who were impressed. Who knows why? I don't think it's DPW. I don't think it's adults. Might be a crazy person. I don't really know. I suspect it's adolescents. People don't do things like that if they know that a place is respected, if they know that it's beloved. They do that because they see, think nobody cares. It's been thoroughly destroyed. Now, I know a little bit about the history. I do know Sickles used to mow it, I believe. Sickles used to grow, uh, plants there, Sickles Market. I do know that Oasis had a nice little place there, uh, where they had, uh, little farm for their, the autistic, uh, transitioning adults. I do know now there's a community garden there, which I think is wonderful. I'm a gardener, I'm a master gardener. I also know there's beehives there, so that's all along one side. The rest of it's a disaster. I went today to walk through, I went to the other day to walk through too, uh, a couple of weeks ago. As I said, I just moved officially into Middletown again, the beginning of August. And.
You're at four minutes, miss.
Pardon me?
You're at four minutes, just to let you know, okay?
Oh, they're, uh, so I'm at one more minute.
One more minute.
Okay. So basically, uh, I went there and I noticed that the paths, it's places are not, the swaths done are not where I feel comfortable going through. Okay? Okay, I don't want to be going against shrubs and stuff like that, that I feel that, you know, I have ticks on them. I have two thing, I have three things to say. One is there is a path being built into the woodland. Does anybody know about it? Where can I find information about who's doing it?
The the, so just so you know, we just introduced an ordinance tonight.
I know about the farmers.
Yes.
I, it, that was a fluke. I saw it as before I came here. I I I said, I pulled down the agenda and I read that. I'm really happy about that. Group of people wanting to do something wholesome and appropriate with that, and not build sports fields. What I'm asking is, is there's a path being built up by the woodland. I'm wondering who did it. I saw it, I've gone the whole length of it. But one day, but today when I went to go the whole length, it's all overgrown. I don't know if anybody knows about it, but I don't know where to find that information. That's
Is that the emergency path, Ted?
Possibly. You talking about the one that leads to to Shady Oaks as you go past the community garden?
No, no, I'll talk to you, I'll talk to you about something else. You might not know about, okay, because the whole place looks like nobody's paying any attention.
Step to the microphone.
No, looks like nobody pays attention. So my first thing is, does anybody know where's a way I can find out? Second of all, I wanted to say is, we cannot blame the deers for destroying that or making it like impossible to take care of. Vines grow at my height, okay? People can cut them down, all right? You've got mulberry minted vine, you have bittersweet vine, you have poison ivy strangling the trees. What we think are canopies are not. They're vines killing the trees. The hazelnut trees have died, a whole bunch of other trees have died. Um, the whole place is just left the way it is. Can, it's like, let it go back to nature. I don't think so. It's it's just totally uncared for, and if you do care for that beautiful, unique spot, it can be cared for, not left neglected and left alone, or neglected so that people are destroying it. The third thing I want to say is that I really love the remnants of the Middletown I grew up in, which that is, okay? Where you can find wildlife. I have pictures of all kinds of stuff. I love it. I would be more than happy to join with a bunch of volunteers. I don't have a bunch of volunteers. But to get a bunch of volunteers, as long as I knew Middletown offered their support of this type of of activity. Uh, and of course, we'd have to know what the activities are. I do believe that we could have an Earth Day there. I'll shut up in a minute, but we'll have it. We can have Earth Day there. That we can have the Boy Scouts come. We can have tons of stuff happening there that makes that utilized. I can't understand what's wrong with Middletown, that you you just never paid any, pay any attention to it. I don't get it. I really don't. It's so unique. There's no other place that has it. You have the shoreline, you have the marshland.
It was private property for the longest time.
I do, I knew that that part was pro, private property where that gentleman
The whole, the whole, Mr. Stevenson, it didn't become our property until Mr. Stevenson passed away.
And that was
Four years ago?
I know the house didn't. I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about the whole tract, okay? Um, it's it's been able to be maintained.
We're 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 happy to discuss with you any type of
Let me, let me finish my, I'm probably over, but let's take one more, one more second. I would like to see those vines off of those trees. And I would like to be able to get volunteers who love the the place to help Middletown or the DPW to take care of it. And I don't want this place to become blighted, so somebody comes back and says, look at the way it is. Ridiculous. It's such a mess. We need to put sports fields in it. No, it's unique. It needs to be sustained and honored and valued by the Middletown community. And now I'm just done with that. Those are the three points I make. Where's, what is that path? I'm willing to do something. Things need to be done that people can do. And it needs to be shown it's loved because it's being destroyed.
Thank you very much for your comments. Welcome back to Middletown.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other member of the public wishing to make a public comment? Yeah, Tara, come on down.
Um, hello, Tara Fleming, forty-nine Brandywine Way. Um, and thank you, ma'am, for those, those, that was great. Thank you very much for caring so much about the community. They had, that's on Spruce Drive, too. There's vines taking over the trees. I have myself chopped it, you know, the poison ivy with an axe. But then, let's, it's on my walks, I'm like walking around the neighborhood with an axe. I don't want to scare anybody, so they should
Could present a dilemma.
They should, yeah, I mean, I've done it, but you know, I don't want to scare anybody, but so they should take care of the vines. It's really, the whole road is getting taken over. But anyway, I came not for that, you just reminded me. Um, I'm following up again about the fluoride in the water. Um, and then, then I contacted the water company, they said it's up to the town. And I was here a few months ago, and then if, another time after that to find out, you guys said you were going to look into it. But according to their website, it's still fluoride, is we're still being poisoned with that in our water here.
Yeah, I I believe Ted has his uh meeting with uh New Jersey American Water coming up shortly.
Yeah, we will have one shortly with New Jersey American. We can bring that up to them.
Okay, well, it's not up, bringing it up to them, it's, they just tell them to stop putting it in the water that comes to Middletown because it's poison.
We we will certainly have a a discussion with them about
Because I did send you guys studies and everything, like, the federal government is in the process of actually doing this, but who knows how long that's going to take, so I feel like locally, we, you know, it should be something that's very easy to do. You just tell them, and then they stop doing it. Thank you.
Thanks, Tara. Any other member of the public? Yep. How are you?
Mr. Paul Jansen, one fifty-two Chestnut. Uh, a few months back, maybe six months ago, a tree fell on the fence and tennis courts at Hillside Park. And while the tree was cleared away fairly rapidly, the fence is still quite damaged and is laying down, eh, not laying, but leaning over uh one of the tennis courts, making them uh not really playable. What's the update on getting that fixed?
I'll ask uh our park park maintenance to take care of it right away.
Okay, the other thing is, is you guys finally did start the curbs on Powell and Chestnut on both ends. Uh, when is that supposed to be complete, that project?
It's ongoing throughout the town, the the curbs, and uh, so I'm not sure about those particular streets. The crews are moving through town, working on various streets.
Um, what's the completion, expected completion time for the projects?
Uh, well, that probably won't be till past the new year, really, throughout the whole town, but that particular project, I'll I'll try to find out when it's
Yeah, because, you know, they did the curbs, but now they've dug up where the street meets the curb. I guess that would be the gutter.
Right.
And so I just would be concerned that heavy rains and snow in the winter would make the roads even worse than they already are.
Where is that dug up?
Um, it's on Portland and First Avenue, Chestnut, Powell, and I think Hillside, but I'm not a hundred percent
Right, they're they're, they are still working through that whole area there.
Yeah.
On Portland still, they're working, so I I'd say probably they'll be out of there within the next week or so, but I'll check to make sure and find
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other member of the public wishing to make a public comment? Tara?
Tara Fleming, forty-nine Brandywine Way. Sorry, I forgot to say this the first time. I just want to say thank you to the Township Committee for everything that you're doing, the great job you're doing in our town. So I meant to start with that, so that's what I can, thank you.
Thank you, Tara. All right, any other member of the public? Seeing no other member of the public stepping forward, move to close the public portion and adjourn.
Second.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sedambreno.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to adjourn.
Have a great night, everybody. Thank you all very much.